I'm going to get down there. I just want to say hi. Hello. Yes, my. Oh, you're welcome.
Puerto Rico, please stand for the pledge of.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
And we did have a closed session meeting prior to this, there were no decisions made. And no vote was taken.
Mayor Pro Tim, this is City Manager Jason Ledbetter, I'd just like to bring one item to the city councils. The city council at this point, but unfortunately, when we were kind of running to work on item 11C, which has a requirement deadline of the seventh, I overlooked and accidentally printed in the agenda, the old proclamation. So at this point, we already have the revised proclamation, but we need to push that to the 18th of October.
Don't you mean 11B, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, 11B.
Is there, um, acting mayor, is there any way that we can just, you know, like take out the second paragraph and go ahead and pass it anyway?
I think just.
I'd like to see the whole thing if that's right.
Yeah, and I think it's just safer based off of agendizing correctly over 72 hours rather than making changes and ultimately our city attorney is not on the line tonight, unfortunately, so.
All right, is that okay with council? Thank you. All right, everybody bear with me because Dwayne is never sick and tonight he's sick, so I'm winging it. And don't grade me. Okay, public comments, public participation is welcome and invited at all city council meetings. Time is reserved at each regular meeting for those in the audience who wish to address the city council. The city requests that persons addressing the city council refrain from making personal slanderous, profane, or disruptive remarks. Council members, when recognized by the mayor, may ask questions or presenter, but no action may be taken by the city council during the public comment section of the meeting. Under the Brown Act, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not listed on the posted agenda. Please speak into the microphone from the podium, the podium electronically adjusts up and down to accommodate speaker. Should you need an additional special accommodation regarding remote microphone, please notice the city clerk prior to the start of the meeting for arrangements. Please state your name for the record prior to providing your comments, please address the council as a whole. If you have documents to present, please provide a minimum of seven copies. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. Public comment period is not intended for a question and answer period or conversation with council or city staff. Item nine, public comment follow-up.
Or we'll stick on eight for now and allow public comment.
This could be a lot shorter without. Okay, I'm going to open the floor for any public comment regarding the consent agenda. Oh, no, I haven't read that part.
Yeah, this is just general public comment on anything that's not agendized.
Not agenda, yep.
I mostly know my name, Mark Atwood. Our homeless problem just seems to be getting worse. My clients are getting very perturbed with the fact that every morning I'm down taking people off their property and it's costing them a lot of money. You know, there's no reason that down at grocery outlet every morning I have to pick up beer cans, needles, roaches. And these people are there every day. We've got no trespassing signs set up, which trespassing sign anymore doesn't mean anything to anybody. And I'm afraid they're going to back out. And then these people will take their property over again. You know, they're tired of paying five, six hundred dollars a month for me to be on their property 14, 15 times a month, running people off of it. And when we started this thing, the whole city thing is, once we got a place for them to stay, they can stay there. They don't have to be on our greenway. Willow goes down, cleans them out, nobody patrols it, they just move back in. So we're going to have to go in and clean it out again, then I'm going to have to go battle them on Botchalupis, Evans, Handley's, Newton's, and a couple other properties I take care of. This, this is just a never-ending vicious cycle. We've got to come up with a solution for this. It's destroying our town. We're putting all this money into our town and you think these people are going to go away when we're done with this project? You think people are going to want to open up businesses in this town with what's going on here? I know the Circuit Court of Appeals has got our hands tied to what we can do with these people. But when one of my clients calls our chief of police three times, and it takes him two weeks to get back to him, we got a problem. And we got to do something about this, you know? It's terrible, you know, down there at Handley, you walk down that sidewalk in front of hair razors and all the businesses there, it smells like urine so bad, it's like getting into a campground outhouse. I mean, the health department doesn't do anything, you know? You know, and I don't see anybody camping on the city lawn here. I don't see anybody camping down there at the courthouse or the old hospital or our Forest Service building, you know, at the football field, they're all ending up on people's private property. How would you like to have to pay that bill every month to keep them off your front lawn? And pick up these noodles? I'm probably the only guy that runs around in Puerto Rico with a Sharpie container in the back of his pickup. You know, it's out of hand, it really is, something needs to be done. I know you guys are trying the best you can, but it's just not working. That's all I have. And getting rid of Willow, taking care of this problem, I think is a mistake. She's made good rapport with a lot of those people. When I have a problem and I call her, she knows them by name. They want to stab me, but they will listen to what she said. So, you know, you can take that for what it's worth.
Thank you for your input.
I thank you.
Thanks.
Steve Bradford, 409 Evergreen, this goes along with what I have to say also. Last week I listened to, or last meeting, I listened to a lady talk about the hate stuff going on with the signs around the neighborhoods and stuff like that, you know? You know, when I was raised in boys' homes, I was raised from the time I was three years old in foster homes, two boys' homes, to the military. So I haven't had a normal life, and yes, I had a lot of hate in my life. I was a very vicious, incorrigible young guy. And, but I always had, you know, we had, we had these, these heroes on TV, you know, that, that I grew up with. I didn't have a father, so I had to grow up with something. Even though I was so angry and, and confused with all of the, you know, my upbringing and everything. I had good moral people to watch on TV, which we don't have anymore. There's nobody for these kids to look to. They, you know, they don't look to their fathers, or do they? I don't know. But we have a moral issue, we have an integrity, we have a the values of our, of our country have been watered down so bad by our government. They want to do their damnedest to, to take everything away from us and, and make us feel like we have nothing. And so it's, it's really a huge, huge issue for all of us to deal with. It doesn't matter right or left, it's something about our country has fallen apart. The Constitution is being watered down to nothing. The Ten Commandments are not even existing anymore. Do unto others as you have them do unto you, the goal to rule is just a simple thing. You know, if we, as parents and, and school boards have a lot to do with it too. I don't think people should be running to the city council with these problems in the communities because the communities have to take care of themselves. And then if it gets beyond that, okay, we go to the city council, I guess. But I would take two or three people from my community and say, hey, let's go have a talk with them, see if we can get reach these people with the signs and the da-da-da. I have signs in my yard too, but not like that. Something else I wanted to say. Oh. Isn't it really encouraging and proud to be, you know, a member of this community of this, of Siskiyou County? And our number one industry, our number two industry is marijuana and, and oh, dad gumming. Oh shoot, homelessness has got me going right now. But there was one other one. Oh darn it, I missed it. Anyway, I'm really concerned about our community. And the morals and the values is what we've lost, and if we can bring that back, and it's not your problem, it's just something that we as a community have to bring to each other once again, so we can bring pride to this town. And this, it doesn't mean going by anything Sacramento or California has to say, because they're just nothing out but doing anything but ruining our country for us. If you don't know that by now, I feel bad for you, but, you know, we weren't this way a few years ago. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Evening, council members. Mr. Ledbetter, Jerry Stocker, Puerto Rico resident and business owner. First of all, I'd like to apologize to the chief because I'm going to say something that was going to be between you and I after everybody. In my mind, over the past few months or a couple months or so, I was thinking that I'd seen some improvement in what I see on the street. And in, in my heart, I wanted to congratulate you guys for working so hard in trying to solve this problem. And then recently I noticed that things were getting a little bit crazy again. And I think it's been about a week and a half ago, we had a gentleman come in our store that Patty noticed he was scratching off some tags, getting ready to steal some stuff. So she confronted him and kicked him out of the store. A few days later, he come back in the store, she noticed who he was, tried to kick him out, he refused to go. She had to threaten to chase him more than once. He refused to leave and then he went back into an employee area only that's designated staff only and still refused to leave until she not so politely threatened to chase him again. I think it was in a few days within that, the same gentleman went to the business next across the street from us. And I don't want to say anything that I don't know the truth about, but I know that there was some things happened that were against the law. I think he threatened some people with violence. Couple days after that, I was blessed with the opportunity to cross paths with this gentleman as he was illegally crossing the street in front of my store. And I stopped illegally in the middle of the road to talk to him, and I very politely asked him not to come back in my store. And very politely, it was not part of the story, that was not true. He agreed not to come back to the store and I again mentioned to him that he need not ever come back to my store very nicely. I felt bad about that as I was driving away because prior to that experience, the first thing I would have said to somebody in that area of town in a situation that I noticed might need help was to offer help to them. So I felt like maybe I should have approached the situation a little bit differently. But I, I don't believe that, he threatened my fiancee. And at some point, something bad's going to happen to somebody, when stuff like that happens. Nobody takes threatening their spouse lightly, no matter what. And I want to avoid that. So I would like to encourage the city council to encourage the police department, to encourage whoever we need to encourage to forget about what the rest of the world is doing. And do like these gentlemen are talking about and take care of the citizens of this town. I know you guys are trying hard, but I think it's a long-term battle that's going to have ups and downs, it's never going to end. The problem with what you're talking about, sir, is we've lost generations of, of men to lack of leadership. That's not going to come back for a long time, so we need to figure out how to live within what's happening. And unfortunately, I think the solution to that is going to be strict law enforcement and some very available mental illness treatment. And I think those two things moving forward are going to be the most important thing that you're going to work on, that's going to help our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Breda, go ahead. Mr. Who? Mr. Sayed, you're on the line.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, thank you, good evening, Mayor Pro Tim and council members. My name is Duriya Sayed and I'm an outreach analyst for the California Department of Insurance. And I just wanted to join and to give you an update on the work we have been doing on your behalf, you know? It is a wildfire season, so I want to touch bases on Safer From Wildfires framework and inter-agency partnership between Insurance Commissioner Ricardo Lara and the emergency response and emergency response and other partnership that we have readiness agencies in the government news and office administration. It's the purpose is to protect lives, homes and businesses and by reducing wildfire risk. So right now we are working with CAL FIRE, CAL OES, Governor Office of Planning and Research, and California Public Utilities Commission. Our department is using every tool available to improve insurance for our communities. So it's kind of a ground-up approach, you know, for such as like, we call it SFW 123. It's based on resilience, it has three layers of protection. Number one, protect the structures such as making sure your roof and vents are up to code. Number two, the immediate surroundings such as brush too close to your home. And number three, finally, the community, involve your entire community to prevent wildfires from catching and spreading to other homes and businesses in the neighborhood. And this includes infrastructure and programs like Firewise. So good news is that, that few weeks ago, Insurance Commissioner Lara submitted his insurance pricing regulation to the California Office of Administrative Law that would recognize and reward wildfire safety and mitigation efforts made by homeowners and businesses. The regulation is the first in the nation requiring insurance companies to provide discounts to consumers under the Safer From Wildfire Network created by California Department of Insurance in partnership with state emergency, as I said. Once approved, the regulation text will be filed with the California Secretary of State and become a state law. Each insurance company will then need to submit their plans to implement these, and once they are approved by the department, they will be in place. We expect this to whole process to be done by January 2023. And also besides that, I just want to be here to let you know I'm your outreach analyst for the department. And please call us, call the department for any help you need. We help our consumers by going with step-by-step things they need, insurance is complicated thing. Our website is insurance.ca.gov and our hotline number is 800-927-4357. But we have dedicated experts that can answer your questions. And I just wanted to say that, you know what, our callback time is just two minutes, so please, you know, thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. No, sir.
Thank you, my name is Bob Dunn, I know some of you, I've never before. First off, I'd like to congratulate you on the efforts you're making towards the proclamation against hate. It just kind of lets people know the stance we are, and I've often wondered how some parents explain the flags that are flying in my neighborhood to their children. So that's, that's, that's a congratulations on that. The other thing is, there was an issue quite a few months ago with a property that burnt down on Bluebird Street in the old Campbell Track area. Specifically, 1022 Bluebird, and the accompanying property was rather derelict, also 1026. It actually went to a hearing and was, as far as I remember, was declared a nuisance. And I want to congratulate the city for ridding it of the squatters and the people that had a basically a chop shop operating there at night, generators cutting up vehicles. But the issue that remains is it's still an open property to animals, children and people, unfenced off. And it is a hazardous material area, the building burnt twice. And a lot of that is still in the ground along with the automotive fluids that have been deposited there and with human, human waste that had been dug a hole and deposited there also. So I'm not expecting any answers or anything like that, but just a reminder that this situation is still out there and does need to be brought to a conclusion somehow, finally addressed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to, okay, I'm going to close public comment at this time. And as a follow-up, I'd like to make a statement and I'm pretty sure I can speak for the rest of the council that we have the same concerns everybody else does that has spoken tonight, we all live here and we all have dealt with the same group of people and we are working on it, we really are. Okay, number 10, the consent calendar. All matters listed under, under the consent agenda are considered routine and non-controversial and will be enacted by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. A, approval ratification of payments issued from September 12, 2022 through September 25, 2022. B, approval of minutes of the regular meeting held September 20, 2022. C, continuation of urgency ordinance, number 864 fireworks. D, continuation of urgency resolution, number 2021-51, remote public meetings. E, lawful text reading of all ordinances on the agenda, ordinances shall be introduced and adopted by title only. And recommendation from the council, and I would like to point out that I need to recuse or abstain from voting on 10B. I wasn't here, nor did I engage in Zoom meeting that night.
Mayor Pro Tim, before we go to public comment on this, you're aware that you do not have to recuse yourself legally, that you can vote on the minutes. You can read the minutes, you can vote on them, that has nothing to do with you having been in the meeting or not been in the meeting. That's, that's from the attorney.
Okay.
Okay.
But I'm not going to vote on it because I did not read all.
So are we going to go ahead and after public comment, are we going to pull that and have to vote on it in a separate? Or can we vote on it all together and then Mayor Pro Tim just abstains?
I think it's cleaner if we split and somebody makes a motion for all items on the consent agenda except for B. And then we come back to B and that way Mayor Pro Tim can recuse herself or abstain.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim.
Okay, and I will open this to public comment at this point on the consent calendar. There are being no comments, I will close it. Counsel, what are your wishes?
May I ask a question, Madam Chair, before we have a motion? So I noticed that our fire chief is here. So item C, 10C is about fireworks. I just had a question for him if I may. And as far, that means I have to stop talking. I just wanted to make sure that we are still in fire season and that we still have fire risks. And I thought you would be the one to know.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Joan Smith Freeman. Yes, we're still in burn ban, we're still, fireworks are still banned, including safe and sane, so yeah, well, that's going to continue until things change to where we feel like we're safe again. That answer.
Councilman McCoy?
Mayor Pro Tim, I will make the recommended city council action to adopt the consent agenda of the city council of Puerto Rico as presented with the deletion of item 10B, the approval of minutes of the regular meeting held September 20, 2022 due to the fact that the Mayor Pro Tim was not in attendance at that meeting.
I would second, I would second that motion with taking item 10B out and I have to vote on separately.
Yeah, I, that's, I'm sorry, I didn't say that, thank you.
Okay, do you want me to call in council members singularly or can I do it as a group? I'm sorry.
I think since we have the mayor on the phone, maybe singularly.
Okay.
Is he still on the phone?
Yeah, it's cutting out real bad, though.
Okay, I am calling for a vote. Mr. Mayor, Kay, what is your vote?
Aye.
Councilmember McCoy?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton? Councilmember? Freeman, yes, it's so hard to be formal and I vote aye as well. And the second part?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that we approve item 10B, approval of minutes of the regular meeting held September 20, 2022 as presented.
In a second? Okay, Mayor Kay?
Aye.
Ms. Councilmember McCoy?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton? Councilmember Freeman?
Aye.
And I will abstain.
I, I honestly, I should have said this, I just had one, one word on page 335 under purpose, and it says for the purpose, the second paragraph down at the bottom, for the purpose of attending long-term agencies, and I think that word is probably for the purpose of achieving long-term financial stability. long-term agencies, and I think that word is probably for the purpose of achieving long-term financial stability. This one, are we going to attend long-term financial stability or achieve it?
Yeah, so that's on.
This is on the item that's about to be presented, so we can make that alteration right now.
Okay. Okay, we're good. On to eleven A. Agenda title, resolution for the creation of a fire department ad hoc committee. Staff report, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and Waireka City Council members. So, as Councilmember Joan Smith-Freeman pointed out, we do want to make a spelling correction to this resolution. We brought this resolution forward, and our city attorney at the last meeting wanted to make some edits. That has cleared his desk. He is comfortable with this resolution. This resolution is for the formation of the Fire Department Ad Hoc Committee. It is to engage stakeholders in the myriad of horizon issues and opportunities facing the Waireka Volunteer Fire Department. The resolution formalizes the function and mission of the committee to assist in ensuring its operational success. The mission of the Fire Department Ad Hoc Committee is to develop long-term plans, operations, and provide long-term financial stability by seeking input and collaboration from community and partner agencies, finding cost-effective solutions, identifying and addressing overlapping services, collaborate, prepare, and support fire prevention and mitigation plans, addressing response for medical calls for services, volume growth, and the consideration of staffing levels, volunteers, and career positions. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now open it to public comment on this item. There being no public comment, I propose that, and council statements or questions?
I think the ad hoc committee is important to help us to plan and make recommendations to the council and work with the fire department so that we are both on it, we're all on the same page before we bring things into the council. So, I support it.
I agree. I support this resolution and forming this ad hoc committee. It's a good idea, I think we should have had it. Wow. But I'll make the motion if I can change that one word.
Yes, please.
That's right, okay. I would like to adopt the resolution authorizing the creation of the Fire Department Ad Hoc Committee, changing the word in the second paragraph under purpose to the purpose of attending to, or purpose of achieving financial stability.
In a second.
Councilwoman McCoy will second that motion.
Okay, I'll take a vote. Mayor Kay?
Aye.
Councilmember McCoy?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton? Councilmember Freeman?
Aye.
And I support it as well. Aye. Motion carries. Go forth and make this happen. Okay, and we have postponed item eleven B, and on to eleven C.
Madam Chair, I would just like to say that I'm sorry to see that we're not voting on this. I think this is the third meeting that we've discussed this, and I really, really want to see us go forward with this because I noticed on the news tonight that the director of the Shakespearean Festival is being threatened with her life. I just really, really would like it to be in writing that we are opposed to these types of hate crimes, and the sooner the better. So, definitely the next meeting, definitely.
Absolutely.
All right. Want me to read the title?
Yes, please.
Okay, agenda title, withdrawal of grant SW dash forty-seven dash zero-zero-two twenty-eighteen Parks and Bond Act statewide parks development and community revitalization, Waireka Swim Center and Native Park. Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Baird and Waireka City Council. This is Jason Ledbetter, the city manager. I think everybody is very aware of the grant that was accepted by the city for the possibility of a new pool in native park. My understanding with this council, the direction that I am currently sitting on was if a ballot measure tax failed, then we would withdraw the grant application. So, I'm currently coming as a common courtesy rather than just to move forward to let you guys have one more discussion about this particular grant. After it was determined that we were not moving forward, Councilmember Smith-Freeman and I quickly contacted the Dally's office. We worked with Megan Dally. We worked with her staff. They came down, they toured the facility, they put pressure on the State Parks Department. The State Parks Department contacted us to re-scope the grant to Ringy Pool. Unfortunately, we submitted all of that information, and we found out roughly about a month later that they would not accept that. And so, I am here tonight just to seek clarification under my current direction, which is to move forward, sending an email to the Parks Department withdrawing this application. And so, the recommended and requested action tonight is discussion and possible action. Motion to authorize the city manager to give formal notice of, the formal notice to the California Department of Parks and Recreation, Office of Grants and Local Services, otherwise known as O.G.A.L.s, of the city's withdrawal from grant award SW forty-seven dash zero-zero-two Waireka Swim Center and Native Park. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I will open this discussion up to the public, public comment.
Hi, Robin Richards from Waireka. Just have a quick comment. I would say today is a very sad day for our kids in Waireka. We really busted it to get the eight-and-a-half-million-dollar grant, which is, you don't have to have a match, which means it's pretty darn good kind of a grant to have for a city pool. And to watch it leave the city is very tough for many of us. Ringy Pool has been an eyesore going on five years, and nothing's been done, and I really do feel like we need to do something. Thank you.
I'd just like to clarify if this is walking away from the grant forever.
I'm Steve Bradford, and I really want to applaud you all for taking the action and not following through with this grant. My other industry that we have here, besides marijuana, is welfare. You know, those are the two leading industries we have in this county or this city, and it's pretty pathetic. You know, up on the top of the mountain, the summit of, up above Happy Camp, there's nothing but burned logs sitting up there wasting away because some agency is in court with some other agency. I talked to Ray Help about it. And they're just gonna tie it up in court as long as they can, so those logs just go rotten. I talked to Mark Crawford about it because he's pretty much been in the logging business, you know, a lot. I don't know exactly how much, but he's, he has a logging company and everything, and he says, you know, there's enough lumber up there to build Portland three times. And I saw it myself. It's a disaster up there. It's so bad. It's so ugly up there. It's horrible.
This is about the pool, though.
I understand. I'm just talking about the industry that we don't have to afford to have a pool without a communist grant. Grants are socialism, and they're nothing but handouts for people who can't afford to take care of themselves. They're not in, it's not what our country was made from. Thank you very much.
Any other public comment? Okay, I will close public comment and open it to council. Councilwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. I agree with Robin that this is a very, very sad day indeed for our city. As many of you may know, I've worked really hard for the last four, five years to find funding, you know, to bring a pool back to our area. And we did try to get funding for, you know, for the pool that failed, and and we were, we were turned down for that. And then we got this grant for the funding that would be above the YMCA, not the ideal location, not the location that we wanted. We actually wanted it to go back to Ringy, which is where my kids learned to swim, and and the mayor, who isn't here tonight, but on the phone, he said he learned to swim there as well. I think this is really sad, and I think that we should put this decision off until we have exhausted all means to find funding for this. We did try, as our city manager said, we went to our, to our state senator and our state assemblywoman, and they worked really hard with the agencies to try to get this. Evidently, the funding for this comes from Prop sixty-eight, and Prop sixty-eight has certain guidelines. It says that you can't have it in an area that has certain, certain things, like, you know, there's a lot of homeownership on this side. There's a higher level of income. On the other side of the freeway above the YMCA, there's more rentals, there's fewer parks, and there's less average income for that side of the freeway. That's the reason that side of the freeway was approved. One of, one of the many reasons. And I would like to thank Robin Richards, who is here tonight, because she worked so hard on this with me. And I just, I'm really disappointed. I'm, I think that our community will suffer for this. I know our children will. Unless you can drive your kids to Montague, they can't even get swim lessons here in town. Even though I'm on the local transportation commission, and we have gotten free transportation on the bus as well as hiring YMCA staff to go with the kids over there and provided snacks for them and everything else, it still is underutilized. There's not enough kids that are going over there to learn how to swim, and there's a lot of water bodies in our area. And one of the main reasons for drowning between the ages of zero and fourteen, I believe it is, is drowning. So, I just think that we need to discuss this a little more. I think we need to really exhaust all means for funding. Councilmember McCoy and I have been looking into some sort of foundation or a way that we could actually get the community to support this so that it would not be a tax. Because I think that's one of the things that the community didn't like, other than the location. If there's anything that we can do to hang on to this eight-and-a-half-million dollars that we will never see again, we turn it down tonight, if we send it back to the state, it's gone. So, I think we need to really take another look at this.
Councilmembers, do you care to comment?
I believe that it wasn't handled very well at the last. You know, we worked, Robin worked so hard, and we had one job to do down here, is take it before the voters. I'm not saying that the tax would have passed, but that's what we should have done. It went a different direction because of all of the disinformation that was put out there. I don't think there was a lot of facts. I think a lot of things were rushed. I think there was some false statements made regarding costs, regarding the ballot being illegal, taking it to the voters. That was not, not the truth at all. I spoke to our city attorney. Nothing about that was illegal. The wording wasn't like, you know, of the liking from several citizens, thinking, you know, of having fire safety first, so they're voting on that. So, I wish, you know, we would have taken to the vote. We really, really did not take it to the vote, to the floor. We had, you know, it was said that that's the way it was gonna go, but we really did not take that to a vote to say it was dead. So, we never did vote on that, really, to say, no, don't put it for the ballot. It was never voted on. So, I think it was handled wrong at that point, myself, my opinion. And if there's any way we can save it or try to move forward and work with the State Parks and Recreation to scale back the project, that if it has to be, if there's any way we can save it, I think we should give it one last ditch effort because the way it went down was egg on our face and egg on our citizens' faces. And so, I really would like to hold off if we can before we can final, final ditch of this, if there's any way we can save it, the eight-point-five-million dollars.
I agree with you, Councilmember Middleton. I think that we owe it to the people to give them the choice to vote, and we did not do that. I think that was a mistake.
Councilmember McCoy?
The first thing I want to do is thank you, Robin, and many others that did a lot, put a lot of work into this. I want to thank you, Councilwoman Joan Smith-Freeman. I know you're passionate about the pool, the ballot measure, and everything, and I, and I think, and I appreciate that in you, and I appreciate that in Robin and everybody else that worked hard on that. When we decided at a meeting, if we, if we re, if we reexamine the minutes, one of the things we did do was if the vote did not come to fruition to put a tax measure on the ballot, we said that we were, that the money was going back. And I think, I mean, so, I'm gonna leave it there for a minute. I know it was a sad time, but I have to tell you that immediately that night, after the meeting, I was energized. I was speaking with you. I was speaking with Robin. I was speaking with Corey and other council members. We can still get a pool here. We can get a pool and put it at Ringy. We can put it, do a different footprint, and out of that can come some other things, like a larger playground. We can give Little League fifteen extra feet, which is what they need in order to host tournaments and things there. I believe we can. I believe there's a path forward. We don't have a cost, and we weren't able to compare apples and apples. We compared apples and oranges. I have brought to this council before, and I've made it known when I talk to people, that I want to see some engineered plans drawn up at Ringy and go through the same process that we've gone through. We can go through it with, with our committee. And with that, then what we can do is know exactly what we are gonna be looking at so that we can look at a cost right then. Then we can, at the same time, be looking for funding, because I think we need to, we need to go out for funding, whether it's a tax measure and sales tax, whether it's grants, whether it's, you know, I mean, there's not gonna be a lot of money out there for things that are not, sorry, grant, unless they're related to water, housing, but I, we can go out and find the money. Is it going to be something that's gonna happen? I know, I see you shaking. Is it gonna be something that's gonna happen overnight? No. But it will be something that will happen. I, so, so I'm energized. I'm energized about it. I'm energized about when we talk about some kind of a foundation. We had one gentleman here. Hal Pickens said he'd donate that two-thousand dollars, and we do have people that want to donate. The reason we don't have a pool is because the city of Waireka kicked this can down the road year after year after year after year after year, rather than spending two-hundred or two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars on a pool to bring it up to date one year, and to have any, pools are expensive. I mean, if you've ever owned one at home, you know. I mean, forty years ago, we spent just two-hundred dollars a month for chlorine alone on our pool in Southern California, in Grillo County. And I grew up in a county where we had a guy by the name of Dippy Duck. Dippy used to say, stay out, stay alive, because all of our swimming was done in the canals. We loved the canals. We surfed in the canals behind people's cars and trucks, and we had a great time. We shot the tubes.
Not to be practiced here.
But, but swimming is important. You're right, getting, getting people to learn how to swim. I am, I'm not gonna see the glass as half empty. I'm gonna see the glass as half full. And, you know, we can shake our heads at it. We can deny it, but the fact is we can, we can get money together. Is it gonna happen overnight? No, it's not. Was it gonna happen overnight with eight-and-a-half million? We don't know. And I'm not, I'm not gonna get into eight-and-a-half million versus twenty-three-million versus thirty-two-million. I just don't know. Without having engineered plans, we do not know. We can do engineered plans, I think, for between two-hundred and three-hundred thousand dollars. And there isn't, again, there's an avenue forward for it. I'd be glad to speak with any councilman or any citizen about it. There's an avenue forward to get, at least get that done, probably in the next year, year and a half, I think. And I've spoken with the city manager about it, and I've spoken with council about it. Whether or not council agrees with me, I don't know. But, but that, that keeps the ball rolling, rather than allowing it to stop totally. But, um, but that, that keeps the ball rolling rather than allowing it to stop totally. So. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, do you have any, uh, comments you'd like to make?
There we go. Sorry about that. Trying to listen, it keeps cutting out on my end pretty bad. So, uh, getting, getting back to, um, what was discussed with, with, what Paul said, um, is absolutely right. We, at that meeting, we discussed that we would, if it was voted down on a tax initiative, that we would, um, send back the, the pool grant. So, um, unfortunately, that's the way it stands. This is what the, what this was, um, on the agenda. The agenda is specifically questioning, um, that grant and that is all the discussion we have at this point in time. If we go any further than, um, that's going against what we said at that, on that motion previously. So basically that's all I have to stand on. Um, we, as a council, um, owe it to our citizens to do the right thing. Yes, we do need a swimming pool. I'll absolutely, uh, uh, one hundred percent agree with that. But we also gotta listen to the citizens and what they want. So that's where I stand on that.
Is that, are you done, Mr. Mayor?
What's that? You cut out?
Did you complete your statement?
Uh, yeah, I think so. I hope I got everything across. I don't know. I think cutting out on this is pretty good.
Okay, all right. And, um, I agree with the consent from both Councilmember McCoy and Mayor, um, Keg regarding the memory of the meeting that this was, um, voted down at and
It was never voted.
For, well, to, to disclose, to discontinue with the resolution the way it was written. How's that? So at this point, um, I would entertain a motion and we can make our voices heard with the vote. So do I have a motion on the floor? And if not, I will make that motion. Recommended city council action. I will move to authorize the city manager to give formal notice to the California Department of Parks and Recreation, Office of Grants and Local Services of the city's withdrawal from Grant Award SW dash forty-seven dash zero zero two, Wayrica Swim Center in Native Park. And, um, I will need a second to continue with this.
This is Councilman McCoy, and I'm gonna second that motion, full well knowing that he does not need this motion, nor does he need this vote in order to return the money. It's a, it's a, it's, it was a, we gave him direction. The city manager, we gave direction as to, uh, if the, if the tax initiative came to fruition and passed, that we would keep the money if it did not come to fruition, uh, or did, which it obviously didn't because it did not pass. That, um, the money would be returned.
Agreed.
So this, this is really, I mean, it's a formality. It's, well, it's just a formality to make sure that, that the city man, nobody goes back on the city manager and says, oh, you sent money back. We told you you couldn't send it back. You know, I mean, that he's bringing it to us as a, as a, um,
Formality. I like it.
As a courtesy. Yes.
Okay, I'm going to move forward with the vote. Um, Mayor Keg.
Hi.
Um, Councilmember McCoy?
Aye, with the caveat that, uh, again, I see the glass half full. I will continue to pursue, whether I'm on council or not, to, to, to work with city due, to get a new pool in.
Thank you. Councilmember Middleton?
I will stay.
Councilmember Freeman?
I vote no.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Okay, item eleven D. Uh, City Wayrica Project List Review and Discussion of City Capital and Operating Project Staff Report.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Bear. This is Jason Ledbetter, the city manager, uh, and the rest of the Wayrica City Council. Thank you. So you had been mentioned in the past that you wanted to see the project list again one last time before we go through elections and seat a new council. And so we are bringing the project list tonight to you and we're gonna go over it. Unfortunately, we do have a couple of members out, one on vacation, one at a conference. Uh, but the majority of projects on there currently can be discussed tonight from our Director of Public Works, who'll join me up here shortly. We're gonna go through all of the public works items and then I will circle back around and take care of planning and HR. Uh, when, when the new council is sat, we will do, we will transition into strategic planning and not so much the project list. And so part of strategic planning, the first item that we're gonna discuss that is a goal that, um, I'm just gonna make a goal for the city, that is revenue based off of running a deficit budget. And so we're gonna talk about all the different options that we have for revenue, see which ones are enticing for city council. We can do a lot of work and run numbers to show how we can bring our budget to net neutral. And when we talk about some of these projects that we want to do in the future, we can also plan on saying, okay, how do we bring enough revenue in to go out without affecting our current budget and get engineered plans for Ringy or any other items that are on kind of the longer term goals for the city. But tonight is just a reanalyzation of the current project list. So I'm gonna ask Mr. Matt Bray, your Director of Public Works, to step up and we'll go through. He's gonna skip some items that don't have anything to do with public works. This is interactive, so please ask questions if you have them. Thank you.
All right, thank you, City Manager Ledbetter, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. Good evening. Matthew Bray, your Director of Public Works. Um, I'm gonna dive right in. First page there, we've got the, uh, commonly referred to as the FHR program. Which, just to touch on that a little bit, is the, the widening of Wayrica Creek from end of town to end of town. That one, we are, uh, I guess I'll lead off with the good news following that last item. There is some good news in the FHR. We are still moving ahead. Um, we were recently made aware that there is an additional five years available in funding on this one.
Lovely. That is good news.
That was great news and I, staff and I calmed down immediately thereafter and focused back on the deadlines that we'd already set for ourselves. So we're still charging hard, um, with the appraisals on some properties around town to get, um, as much of this money put down on the ground as we can, um, now in the next five years, but, um, those two grant deadlines that you see there have been extended. So that's great. Gives us some breathing room with, uh, the other projects that I love talking about.
And FHR is blood hazard reduction.
So the second one, there's your, uh, emergency generator project. We've brought this before you a number of times. Uh, different iterations of it and it's through OES, uh, Hazard Mitigation Funding. And there's a need, three or four different areas within public works for backup power. We are working on that one currently dusting off what we put in, we were ready to put in last year, some other projects and some other staff changes got in our way. Um, so we'll be dusting that back off. I'm also looking with Pace, our city engineers, about possibly tying this into, uh, the upcoming wastewater treatment plant project that I'll speak to in a little bit. That's me for the first sheet. The, um, I'm gonna let Jason speak to the encampments. Did you wanna interject on the top one there?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna dive in here. So we have the, um, urban, I think what's been commonly referred to as the urban campground cleanup over off of Foothill. So we do have DTSC gave us the grant to clean up the property, uh, you know, close to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, the intent of cleaning up that property with DTSC is that there will be an urban campground on that location once this project is completed by the city. So within the next year or so, um, if that changes, we can certainly go back to DTSC and make them aware of that. What that changes for us, I am not sure, but there is a risk there. We don't plan on moving forward with that project, that, uh, we may end up having to pay that money back. So if everybody's just aware of that risk. Um, right now, because DTSC gave us the money and we did not move forward with spending our own general fund money, there were a number of things that now we had to comply with. That changes the RFP. So Cindy has told me that she should have this RFP out on the street in the next two weeks. And so we should be seeing a contractor hopefully at that point to do this cleanup.
So then the rest of that page is planning and HR. It's not public works. I'm gonna skip up, up page three of nine. The corp yard, which is the corporation yard, which is a city yard, I think, North Main and Greenhorn Park fencing and gate project. We've split this off on, so we're not focusing on the actual fencing of the yard portion. We're focusing down on the Greenhorn Reservoir Gate Installation. We've had some issues with quotes and vendors and supply chain, like every other project we've been working on lately. And so I'm working with Ben, your Maintenance and Operations Manager, and he is just, I think this week, we're about to see some numbers on the gates for Greenhorn Park. So the automatic locking, opening and locking, it's up there, upper and lower Greenhorn. And that's just something that we will source the, uh, gate openers and install in those.
Will there be an override?
Yes.
Option.
Yeah, we've, uh, we've discussed, I need to get with, with Chief Gilman. All of those systems come with an override. So if you get locked in and you pull up to the gate, it'll let you out. Um, that's the discussion that Ben and I need to have with Chief is, do we really want that? Um, as it is now, they're locked manually by hand and if you're in, you call the YPD, it's on the number and they come let you out. And I, my, my fear, just without talking really over with Chief yet, my fear is that people would learn that within the first three days and they would just go to the park whenever they wanted and stay as long as. So it's a, we'll, we'll, we'll bring all these back to you. This is just an update of where we are tonight. Um, still on page three. Not me, not me. Not me. Go on to page four.
Page back at the theater. Is that you?
Um, we're gonna circle back to that one.
Oh, that's a biggie.
Uh, theater roofing. We're looking to spring, summer of twenty-three. Um, that one's, we've got a local HVAC contractor working with our city engineers and Pace with their depth actually has HVAC here. And so this one again has been hung up on, uh, supply chain issues and that kind of thing. But the roofing and the HVAC, we've tied together because the roofing project puts a brand new roof on the place and the HVAC pumps holes in it. So we don't want one project to go before the other. So we're just working that as a, as a joint project scheduling and timing.
Mr. Bray, do we have a grant, uh, awarded already from the Norris Foundation?
Yes.
They don't often, uh, give any money out of the Los Angeles County area. Not, not like that.
No, that was, uh,
They'll give fi, yeah, I know. They'll give five or ten thousand dollars, but not like that.
No, this is an amazing project. So that's why the roofing ties back to the HVAC.
They, they, they grant, they're a private foundation that grants anywhere from twenty to fifty million a year.
So we've gotten it down. We're actually seeing some pricing now on some, on a number of the units, which again, supply chain issue on actually getting the unit shipped to us, but we're starting to see pricing. I'll share without, that with you in, um, meetings to come. Um, so that's good. Like I say, we're making progress. We're getting it through. We expect to have, you know, all the design and engineering ready to go this midwinter, get it out there and get the parks coming. Unfortunately, we're hearing from our vendor, our local HVAC, that he is, uh, seeing eight month lead times on specific, like air conditioning.
He, he had a four month lead time on the unit for my house and with, you know.
Yeah, I would just, I would have to assume they all experiencing the same GFC programs that the car manufacturer. Let's see here. I'm gonna go down to the third one, the sixteen hundred permit. Um, the city hired Preciv, Precision Civil Engineering to assist us in this one after working with another one of our consultants. Um, we met with them last week on a, on a Zoom call. And they had, they're preparing the, it's a near final draft for our review, for staff review. So I'm, I'm expecting to see that this week, early next week. Um, just a few little additions and stuff in there, but they liked what they, what they saw, what we had previously turned in, Fish and Wildlife. They liked it. They dusted it off. They took a little bit out and tweaked a few of the maps and they, so that we're getting thumbs up from our consultant on that one that it's ready to go here soon. So that gets it back out in the creeks on the maintenance side. Main Street Sewer Interceptor is complete, which is a huge prod, project, as you've all seen. That's the one when we started digging holes in Main Street in October. Um, so that one's complete. We're just finalizing the very, very end of the paperwork. Bond issuance and stuff for the USDA. And just to remind you, that was a five point seven million dollar project that we kicked five hundred thousand dollars into. So that was a sizable chunk, um, replacing the sewer mains for the entirety of State Highway three through our little town.
And then it goes, this is Councilman McCoy. And then what I'm seeing here is it goes into a, a forty year bond is what it is. Okay. Thank you.
So then we've got the Burgess upcoming, Burgess Wastewater Collection System Improvements. This one, we're working through bid docs, looking in this winter, hoping to move into construction, uh, next spring, next summer. This is the, I've spoken to you a number of times about the Burgess Street project. It's just all the sewer there. Spring Burgess, all of those areas that, everything down there is antiquated, it's ancient stuff, needs to come out. Initial, uh, engineering estimates on that right now are laying at five point five million dollars. And that one, we did get funded also. So we're charging hard on that one. Skipping to page five. Got task orders for wastewater plant. The first line there is the SCADA, the Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition. That's the electronics that allows our crews to operate valves, see high limit and low limit alarms, um, computers from remote locations. We can run the plant similarly to the way that we run the water distribute, the water treatment plant, I'm sorry, at Fall Creek. We can pull that up on our computers and our smartphones and twist dials and knobs and open gates, gate valves and such like that. So this project, fully SRF funded. We had two options or three options to look at. I brought the city manager in with our engineering team last week. There was a less expensive option of just upgrading the electrical systems at the plant, but looking to the future growth that you're hearing about from the planning director and, um, just the community, what we're expecting to see in the next few years. This project is going to be the first step towards the next project, which is building the plant out for more capacity. This one lets us talk to all the bells and whistles at the plant, um, and sets us up perfectly for a plant upgrade for more affluent to roll through it. So there's, so instead of just the electrical, I met with the engineers and I said, you know, this particular pot of money, according to our engineers, there's a ridiculous cap on this thing. You could basically say there's no cap. Um, so we took about a four million dollar electrical upgrade and slipped it to a sixteen million dollar upgrade because it's CWSRF money. It is just available to go. So I will be speaking at length about this project as it comes further to fruition with you. It is the largest plant upgrade we've seen since the day we built it. And it's decades overdue.
Which is important if we ever want to grow our city, right?
Correct.
Yeah, and I just thank you for pointing that out, um, Councilmember Smith Freeman, is that when we have talked about growth in the past, um, and I know the intention here kind of settled on a number roughly around ten thousand. That is our limiting factor is the wastewater treatment plant. Um, we can't really go over another thousand people now if we wanted to. And so, um, this ha, this is kind of understanding your guys' perspective and knowing where we want to end up roughly in that ten thousand area. That's why we need this knowledge to then build out projects like this. So thank you for pointing that out.
So, uh, on to the next one. I think I'll leave that for the city manager and the assistant city manager. South Oregon Street Rehab, that's fully in my side of the house with Cindy. Um, we are working on survey work and that's all complete and the engineering design is coming upon completion now. So in a way, it's nice that we, we had the ability to kick this one a year out. As you can see, what's happening on the south end of town right now with Caltrans and the way that the sidewalks are coming out and the traffic is a little crazy. Um, I could only imagine if I had torn out South Oregon for you right now. So we're, we're excited for next year, just keeping in mind that as the Caltrans project, I don't want to get into it too much tonight, but as they move through town, their number one requirement that's most important to us that live here is that they have number one requirement that's most important to us live here is that they have to keep one lane north, one lane south open through the entirety of the project at the whole time. So yes, it's a mess from moonlit south right now, but you can still go north and you can still come south for the most part.
Yes.
So Mr. Bray, on the grant, uh, the grant deadline is June twenty twenty-five. Are, but are, are we looking at, you're saying we're looking at doing the project in June of twenty twenty-four?
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're coming in, coming in hot next summer.
Or I, I'm sorry, twenty-three.
Three.
Oh, I'm, yeah, sorry. Thank you very much.
Right, we're coming in hot. Springtime, summertime. Senior bus, I will speak to it just because it's there in front of me. Um, but this is Cindy's project. She's been there since the beginning of it. It's expected any day. It was one of these projects that I think I mentioned it a bit ago. There were no chips to put in the van so they could get it to us. Now it's done. They're ready to drive it to us. And we said, whoa, there's a, a very crazy, we've been calling it internally, it's governmental red tape in front of our government. So we're wrapped up in the same thing a lot of our citizens get hung up in right now, which is governmental agency with a governmental agency. So it all boils down to when we make a sizable purchase for the city of any equipment. At least on the public works side, we're part, we, we join these consortiums and we get buying power because we're in the county, the city of that number, everybody else. And there are always little issues you need to meet, marks you need to cross off to purchase from these consortiums. Um, late hit to us on this one. They said, hey, the van's ready, we wanna drive it up. And so there has to be an allocation for a transit bus, which hospice doesn't qualify for that. So Stage Graciously offered us one of theirs, which they have an unlimited, it's an odd governmental thing. They have an unlimited allocation, so they gave us one of their unlimited allocations. There's paperwork swirling in the background. As soon as that lands, they're gonna drive the bus. So it's good. And Cindy will be very happy that it's not on her desk anymore. It's been there for a number of years. Um, Main Street Asphalt and Paving Caltrans, I'll just speak to it quickly. I just touched a little bit. As you see, they're charging, they've got a lot done on south end. They've worked up above, past the light up on Juniper. Um, I haven't been up there this week, but I hear that they're coming down into town. So, yeah, that one's here to stay, another couple of years of that. Um, but I do see I'm getting a lot of concrete forming and pouring on the moonlit oak side. So once that starts, starts going, it's gonna be an impressive convoy of concrete trucks. The Main Street Beautification Project, we spoke about this not too long ago. City Manager Ledbetter and I reviewed the agreement, the project specific agreement between the state and the city, which says you pay for this, we pay for that. Um, there was only one kind of boots on the ground alteration that we are asking for. Um, we spoke with Carrie Moles, the project manager, this morning on the phone, let her know about that. She was shooting it off to her team. So we'll hear something back in a week or two on that. Um, and just so you know, it was, Jason and I don't feel that the thermoplastic crosswalks that the council requested at the two intersections. Uh, we don't feel that that maintenance of that should fall entirely on the city. Because the state had put in that agreement that snow plow damage was normal wear and tear. I wholeheartedly disagree with that. So that's the one negotiating point that, uh, Jason and I had. And then we shot it off to Dawn to check the legal ease on the last five pages. So that's where that was. Uh, next page, the, the existing streetlight relocation, which is separate from fifty some odd decorative pedestrian streetlights that were added to the Clean California Grant, Caltrans is doing for us. This one's been done for a number of months. It's just still here. But, um, Jason and I pushed back on the state on that one. And initially they had wanted us to relocate all of the city owned streetlights along Main Street. We didn't feel that was necessarily fair. Since it's in the state right of way and all that. So, and it was their project that was causing them to be moved. Um, our numbers came in about four hundred thousand dollars to do that job when they penciled it out the first time. But, um, Caltrans taken, they took another look at it. They believe they can do it for two hundred and fifty-five thousand. It's on them. They're not gonna charge us a dime for it. Um, because they're, they're already mobilized, you know, when we're looking at creating a new project from scratch with our admin overhead costs, mobilization costs, all that. It goes crazy, as you've seen in prior projects.
Mr. Bray, Ledbetter, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Matt. Um, when can we expect a letter from Dawn regarding clarification of costs and settlements going to, before the council and going to Caltrans? I, I noticed that. We haven't, it has not been sent yet, has it?
No, at this point, uh, our city attorney is focusing on the agreement that Mr. Bray referred to. And he should have that done, I would assume, this week sometime. And that would be the negotiating point that goes back to Caltrans. Are you seeking some more clarification from, uh, some costing or I'm?
No, 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 I'm just looking at the, I'm looking at the notes and making sure that our city attorney is staying on top of the, we're getting it.
Oh, this one's completed.
Right, these are, yeah, these are, this is complete. This is a, they're a little bit dated. The notes in here are a little dated. Actually, we would have gone down that path with the city attorney had they, the state stood up and said, no, you're going to pay for this. And then we would have had Dawn drop the letter, but.
Thank you. Thanks.
Um, STIP programming, this line's directly speaking to, uh, chip sealing. You know, our next year of chip sealing. And, uh, the note there said that Ben and Matt to discuss, and we, we call it Streets Camp. Ben and I, we take a week or two during, uh, winter time, one at a slow. And, uh, you'll find a week or so to drive around and, and mark off that list and bounce it off of our Street Saver computer program that rates our streets. And so I believe I'll have to check, but I believe this year we're due for the Street Saver truck to actually come back and do on the ground laser surveys. So I will be speaking to you all about that as we build the list for Chip Seal for next spring and fall.
And for people that don't know, the Street Saver truck that he's talking about drives around town. And I believe it photographs the street, the street underneath the truck. We've discussed this at length at, uh, the local transportation commission, Nancy knows. And then they rate our streets. We get an A, B, C, D, P or F. And a few years ago, our streets were rating at C and D. But we've.
We were, we were bottom of the barrel when we started with the Street Saver program. And that, that also predates, um, you are correct. And that predates Measure C, we're passing a Measure C, which we couple with the, the funding that comes in through the roads tax and stuff every year.
Hopefully we'll get A's and Bs.
I, at the time, I was hoping we, that Measure C would keep us where we were and just get us down the road at the, we were a forty-seven out of a hundred, zero to a hundred. Citywide, we were a forty-seven or a forty-eight. I was really hoping it would just hold us there instead of looking at the projections in the computer that dove off to the twenties and we're driving on dirt roads and might as well get your horses back out. So actually, the, the update that I read last month, and we lost a point because the computer algorithm does what it does, but we're up in the mid to high fifties. So we're going up and it's because of Measure C and because of all those streets and chip seal stuff that we've been doing with that. Um, Main Street Water System Improvements, this project kicked off, again, we're back out on State Route three. Um, it kicked off a few months after the sewer that we started in October. We are down to the final week on that. Allen Gill Construction notified us that they will be demobilizing out of our town this week. It was just a, a handful of punch list items. I walked a few of them with them, um, this week and last week. They're fixing everything that we found at the very end like we do. So then after that, they'll get that done, send you a charge back in and finish up all the paperwork. Get everybody paid, get all the subs paid out, get all that done and we'll be closing it. So it's as good as complete. That was initially a four point three million dollar project of an upgrade, which is huge. Which, um, CDBG with the Water Enterprise match. There were a number of additions that we found along the way and then a, a number of subtractions that we found we didn't need. And so the, the total number, I don't have it put together yet. That's what Cindy will be cranking on, is getting that all down. But we're, we're in a very good spot and I couldn't be more proud of the way that that happened. But the upgrade that we've got on Main Street, thanks to Caltrans and they're forcing us to do this before their project. You know, it's the silver lining. It's the hard work of all of our staff that put all those, that went out and found the funding. I mean, this wasn't one pot of money and we need new water, we need new sewer. It's multiple pods, multiple applications. It just went on for years to get it together. So, I mean, I applaud our staff. It's just, it boggles my mind that we're done. Um, but then on to the East Lennox Water Line and Water Treatment Filter Improvements. So East Lennox, um, this goes back to the Boarjack job that we had. I spoke to the council a few times about that. We were drilling a three hundred and twenty foot hole underneath all lanes of I five. And that, that company was here doing that as a sub to SNL, who was a contractor that had just finished our sewer and flipped over to this. They, they were awarded this project too. And then so we did that. Replaced all the water line in East Lennox on both sides of the freeway from Main Street all the way up to foothill. And did the Boarjack and turned it all back on and got new fire hydrants and new meters and all that done. Forgot to put the number on that, how much that one was, but it was a sizable project. There were some sleepless nights, um, but it really, it all came together. A portion, this was one project, so you have the East Lennox and then the water treatment plant, filter improvements. Those are the pods at the end of bigger road at the filtered treatment plant, the big steel pods. We had an issue with a, a painting, uh, vendor and timing and supply chain. And then we found some, uh, what was actually in those pods, the way that the plumbing was welded together was different than our original plans said when we put them back in there. So we had to redesign that. So I, I don't really see us going into a full winter suspension because that's a whole, another set of paperwork. But it looks like the contractor SNL will be kind of slowing down, pulling back and then coming back in the springtime because it's a two-part epoxy paint, can't do it in the cold weather and it's got the stars have to align and all that. So. But if, they're both going great, except for that little uh, hitch in that giddy up there. Which leads me in, into the Water Supply and Storage Improvements Project, which is upcoming. We're rolling that into that one heavy too. We've got some properties we need to acquire. Um, and some easements and right of way issues to straighten up with survey. This one puts in some new, new tanks, puts in new pipes, puts in a, a number of items. It's just yet another upgrade to our water infrastructure that we just, you know, I, there was a sigh of relief there a couple of weeks ago when we were done, done on Main Street. And then I looked at this list. Yeah. There's no slowing down here. So, and that one actually is another sizable at four point nine million. So, I mean, we're we're building ahead of the growth we're expecting. We're upgrading, it's all this new stuff. It's I didn't think I'd see this during my career. And then I have, um, just one thing on the Klamath Dam removal that I've spoken to you before, the primary project that I worked on with city attorney and Jason through this was the protection of our water service because Fall Creek goes underneath what is now a lake, which could be then now a river. And the project has to replace our water main. So we, as I said, I've spoken to you many times about this. The city received everything in the plan set from the engineers of the project out there. Everything we asked for is in the design. We've okayed, we've approved, actually let council know that before, just bringing it back up. So as far as we are concerned in Public Works, if we were to build it tomorrow, we would build it the way they're gonna build it for us. And myself and Ben and Pace Engineering are gonna be onsite watching them build it and billing our time to them as they build it. So it's a huge win for the city because as a portion of this project, we get a pipeline that we did not get. So another massive water system upgrade.
And Mr. Bray, any idea of what that doesn't cost us?
I have numbers, but I won't publicly share them because I, I didn't go research them. I have them jotted down, but it's
Millions of dollars.
Millions. If you can imagine building a bridge over the Klamath River to carry a twenty-four inch water pipe that provides water to seventy-seven hundred people a day. It's not.
Bridge over troubled waters.
Yeah.
It's a biggie.
Mr. Bray, who did you say, who, who absorbs that cost?
The project, the dam removal project.
So.
We're in their critical path because we're downstream. So before drawdown, should, should the project get there? I won't go there.
Yeah.
Before drawdown, which would then scour the, the new river bottom, the, the ancient, ancient river bottom. Our pipe needs to be relocated.
KRRC, I guess, right?
Right, but I, I'm in touch with their engineer, but yeah, the KRC is the immediate side of it.
So for saying KRRC, we're talking about tech, we're talking about our dollars that we're paying to Warren Buffett. We pay so much every month on our power bill.
That's a very good point. Um, I've said it's a staff. I haven't said it publicly, but I will. I think this is a huge win for the citizens. We have been paying that additional fee on our water, on our power bill. So Pacific Power, for however many years, we're getting every dime of that back plus.
Well, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not being negative about that.
Right, right. No, it's a
Just when you have the kind of money Warren Buffett has, you don't need to, you need to go ahead and, and, and upgrade your power plants and not pull them out.
Right, but by getting this upgrade to our water system, it's like we're getting our money back. That's how I like to look at it.
Thank you.
Um, hatchery design coordination, that's a, a Dawn thing at this point. I've said my piece from the public works side about the hatchery that's proposed, uh, near our Fall Creek headworks. The water rights discussion, again, I'm all highly involved in that with Jason and Dawn, but I don't really have anything up to do there. And that's what I have.
Incredible. Thank you so much, Matt. That is a, tens of millions of dollars, but you may have some questions here from council.
Thank you, Matt.
If I may, um, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, Matt?
He's up there.
I know. You said you were going to go back to the theater.
I immediately did. When we took
And you know I'm
Switched the page. I switched the page to the theater roofing and started talking about the HVAC improvements that are coinciding.
So update us on that because it's been years.
Which is that, which one?
Theater Roofing Project.
So that's
There was another one. Oh, the Community Theater HVAC Improvement. I see. You said you're rolling that into the roofing.
Right, that's why I just flipped over to the roofing project because it coincides with poking holes in the ceiling. We probably shouldn't have put it on first. Anything else? Or Jason takes?
And thank you to Red Scarf too, for
Yes, huge thank you to Red Scarf for the
Rhonda, does Mr. Mayor have any questions?
Okay, well, you know, at this time, I, like I said, a lot of it's cutting out pretty bad. So if I could ask everybody to speak clearly into the microphone, it seems to help. I'm receiving Paul McCoy's real clearly. I'm receiving yours, Mayor Pro Tem, and I'm receiving Jason Ledbetter's real clearly too. Um, but the, at the podium, it keeps cutting out pretty, pretty massively. And, um, other council members are cutting out pretty massively too. So if I could have people just speak closer to the microphone, I think it helps a little bit.
All right, thank you. Whoa, my gosh. Wake everyone up. Trying to help out the mayor there. Uh, this is Jason Ledbetter again, the city manager. So uh, I'm just gonna go back through the items that are more paper projects on some level. And so when we look at, uh, on page one, we have the EDA Job Plester Market Feasibility Studies. This was something that was already in the works. This is something that the Economic Development Council is, uh, working on for us. So we're in contact. Uh, we held a every other Friday meeting with EDC and Wyrica City Staff. And so they're continuing to move forward on this project. The Housing Element Update, as you're quite aware from your Director of Planning, and she is down at the state conference in Anaheim currently. Um, this is completed in draft form. You guys approved that draft form, so it's being reviewed by HCD. It will come back to us after the review period. Where then technically we would be mandated to update based off the notes from HCD. And then we are currently, uh, our planning director is pretty well educated within the county and working, she works quite well with the planning director over at the county. They have a great planning director over there as well, Haley. And, uh, to our understanding, we will be the first to get this through the system at the appropriate time, thereby opening up a ton of funding for us for the housing projects that we do want to do. So we're still looking at February to get this completed, which is right in line with the requirements. The general plan, obviously Juliana continues to work on that. We've kind of opened that up so she can do more public outreach. Uh, she worked with the school district across the street and she did multiple days of engagement with the children over at the schools. On the higher grades, she gave them prompts on doing very specific things, I believe, over at Fairchild Medical Center. And then on the lower grade, she left it pretty open ended. But she got a lot of interesting ideas. And if nothing else, there's a level of education to let children kind of understand what we do over here at City Hall. But this is still in line for the end of twenty twenty three with the general plan. So. So on the half, the homeless at housing program, uh, we're engaged with the county and piggybacking off of their hap. So we're working with Sarah Killard on that. And I believe this time has passed. So. I'll have to double check with, uh, Dr. Killard, but I believe this is already in the review process at the at the county. The compensation study, uh, we do have a draft. Rhonda, can you clarify, is it completed or is it still in draft form? Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Hogan. So we do have this coming back to us, but we are, it is in line to be bargaining. Properly with the compensation study. So it was a kudos to our H R director who. Uh, is on vacation and, um, I told him not to check his email. So he is hunting at the moment. So. Personnel policies, policies. This is also an H R function and we're working with L C W and internally we have, uh, our assistant city manager. We also have Renee, who is an H R analyst to some level. And obviously John Elsnob, your H R director, but this also is is coming to a close, but ultimately personnel policies. We'll have to go through the unions as well. So this process, um, we'll go through that normal timeline before they're completely adopted. The citywide fee study, obviously, uh, we did pass some fee up, uh, we did pass some recent fees. We still have dog license fees that we will come to you. On October eighteenth. We're going to present to you three different options that bring in three different levels of revenue and leave it up to city council on direction moving forward with, uh, possibly increasing those fees. The objective design standards, I've started to attend the, um, planning commission meetings now regularly, um, just to. Help educate the planning commission on kind of the plans of city council. Uh, and what our goals and objectives are, what projects we have. This one is still sitting. We're doing a red line to some concerns the planning commissioner had and we'll be bringing it back to them. Uh, we're shooting to move the planning commission meeting that currently sits on October nineteenth. We're looking at trying to push it out a week. But this will go back to planning commission before it's brought to you. But the objective design standards really falls right in line with the project we would like to see happen that we can stand up with subsidized funding from the state. Either at fifty percent all the way to a hundred percent funding. And it has to do with, uh, roughly. Five or more units. At a very specific income threshold. And then that term is for fifty five years on rent or forty five years on mortgage. So it's very specific. The objective design standards are specifically in this instance. For housing at a workforce housing level income. They don't affect any of the other design standards of anything else we do. The childcare ordinance, unfortunately, I will have to follow up with Felicia. I'm not aware where we currently stand on this. But that leads into the municipal code update. And I know you've been told multiple times. By our, uh, planning director, there is a lot of cleanup that needs to happen on our Muni code. Sometimes that Muni code is outdated and doesn't match the overriding state code. And so this is going to be a three to four year project with your. With your planning director. This is kind of why we're, it's a good opportunity to reevaluate our Muni code and all of our ordinances. Uh, but it also is necessary to update all of these ordinances because some of them are technically out of date. Critical infrastructure ordinance, obviously that one is completed. And chime in if you have any questions, please. The recreation economy for rural communities, um, project that took place with the federal partners ran by the E D C. Uh, we had a number of council members participate in that specifically. I'm thinking Mayor Pro Tim Baird and council member Smith Freeman. This obviously was. Uh, and members of the public, I think Robin Richards participated through all of the Zoom calls as well. We wrapped up our final Zoom call. I expect to have this document to us that has a number of task items for the community as a whole. Some of them are specific to the city of Wyrica. Uh, such as doing a parks master plan. Uh, there's a number of different task orders on there. I will bring that for adoption and go over that document with city council. My goal is to adopt that document. And utilize that as, uh, the need for future funding to work on a lot of those projects. Um, but the parks master plan is something I believe that the city council already wants to do. But that should be coming hopefully in the next couple of months when Jason S B, I believe with the EPA completes the document and we get our hands on it. We're still negotiating the Carnegie Building and, uh, on the eighteenth, we'll have kind of an annual update. On everything that the E D C does. And I believe at that point they'll share with you some renderings that their engineers have done for the Carnegie Building. But as far as the agreement and, uh, the contract. Internally, we're reviewing that to kind of understand where the interim city manager left off. So, uh. Assistant city manager Rhonda Hogan and I are looking at that document. Dawn is looking at that document to make sure that it's the same document that we. Thought we left off on by roughly a year ago before I started. So. The brownfield inventory, this is just a real. We oversee as this, as the agency for the E D C. To manage this grant. So Cindy does a lot of compliance, doesn't include the entire county, but it does include the county itself and includes multiple jurisdictions. And so I think. They had come to us and they had requested to utilize a large portion of what's left over because this is a recurring grant. So the grant runs out, you go get a new grant. But they have some work they want to do in the Mount Shasta area in Siskiyou County. And so we told them absolutely, you guys can utilize that funding. There's still funding for us to do brownfield assessments when we need to. But we also kind of leverage that to say, hey, can you give us a break? Can you give us a cycle off? Can somebody else manage this at a different agency? And so that's what's going to happen, which will. Alleviate time for Cindy to work on the larger projects. The city hall remodel, I don't know if we went over this one before, but we still are attempting to move forward on this project. Um, and so we should be all circle back with, uh, with Cindy on that.
She hears that?
No.
I think she's back there, but.
We've, but we've, we have been discussing this item. So, um, I think this is a malleable item because we went out and we have a certain amount of funding and obviously COVID happened and everything got substantially more expensive. But if we do pull it off, I think our intention is ADA bathrooms and kind of enclosing this. And so. I think that's still doable. We may have to temper down some of the other expectations we had, but the intent was. ADA bathrooms, especially for nights of city council meetings. So people could walk right out there and just not need the door unlocked for them. So. So we did. Finally officially receive the grant for the new fire station site analysis and feasibility. So Cindy is working with our consultant Ashby to start that project. So. That's good news. And that'll be a topic of conversation based off the ad hoc resolution that we just passed for Y F D, uh, ad hoc committee. So we are internally looking at a number of different developmental impact fee possibilities and analysis that we will be bringing forward to you here in the near future. One of them that we're starting right now that more than likely I don't think will come. We need some analysis done by N C E and then that analysis will go on to. Um, another consultant to get us kind of a possibility for rates and fees. Um, but we are actively, I believe, assistant city manager Rhonda Hogan, working with Public Works is continuing to push this with N C E on a stormwater master plan. That then leads to a master plan, leads to a multitude of different projects that then you can take that project list and go price those projects out and then better understand what level of revenue you need or what level of funding you need to pull up those projects. And then finally, uh, our water permit is due. And so it's due at the end of the year and, uh, our attorney is currently working on that. We have some environmental review that we're going to do in house with our planning director. She'll be coming back from, uh, Anaheim on Wednesday. And because we need this documentation immediately for Don to move forward within the timelines, uh, before December thirty first, we have put a plan together. With Don Henyon and Juliana Lucchese. So she's going to come back. She's going to work from home on Thursday and Friday and only focus on getting Don the information he needs on the I S M N D. Uh, and then from there it'll be with Mr. Henyon and he will be able to finalize the submittal for our water permit. And that leads us to the end of this particular list. Does anybody have any questions or?
Did this list grow or is it my imagination?
There were a couple of items that had been discussed and as we transitioned through public works projects, um. That don't require funding from us. I think they've been added to this list. Um, but pretty much internally, the planning director came in. And immediately started to get everything, everybody, the majority of everything everybody was doing that considered a project on a document like this. So we consider it fluid. So we will add things to it like the sixteen hundred permit or, uh, different items as they come up that have already been given direction on to move forward. So. It's fluid completely, yeah.
You good?
I'm good.
Councilman McCoy? Yeah, this, I used to have a comment, uh. Madam Mayor, um, for four years I've sat on the council now and I know with the council, I think it's safe to say that we have asked for. You know, to to have a fluid project list and you have brought us, uh, several different project lists since you've come on and I really appreciate that. And I appreciate all the work that everybody in the office did to bring this because I don't think that we all know, and I don't think that the average, uh, that that. You know, me, if I'm not on council, I don't realize what all is going on. And it's not just the money. It's just knowing. The big and the small things that are going on because a lot of what the city does isn't sexy. It's not police and it's not fire. It's public works as well and police and fire are sexy, but, um, and firemen and policemen are sexy too. But, um, and yeah, and 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 fire persons, I should say, and police persons, but, but this is not sexy. And yet this is the reason we live here. Because of these sorts of services that we take for granted every day. So I want to thank the staff for that.
Well, thank you very much. And I will kick that over to staff that organized this and continues to manage this document. Thank you.
Lot, there's a lot of work in here.
Yeah.
Alrighty, moving on. Item number twelve, new business, business agenda title. Approval of the city's preliminary grant application with the chief resilience officer to Cal O E S for up to one million in state funds. Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim and Wyrica City Council members. Jason Ledbetter, your city manager again. And so this was the item I was trying to refer to at the start that. This closes on the seventh to get a grant in. The window was very small. And so we were racing at this opportunity. Uh, working with, of course, the brains behind the operation back there, Rhonda Hogan. Um, and Juliana Lucchese, we have put together a draft grant application. For up to a million dollars over a five year term to Cal O E S. That would give us the opportunity to hire a new person, which would be. I believe they call it the resiliency officer, the chief resiliency officer. What Cal O E S wants this person to do and what's in this grant application is they want them to work on the hazard mitigation plan. They want them to continue to apply for more grants for home hardening and mastication projects throughout the city. And so before this grant became available, staff and myself were working with the Wyrica Fire Safe Council members, uh, George Jennings and Jay Perkins. We had multiple P meetings in. Uh, here in the chambers. And they had already done a ton of work on different projects that are in our C W P P for the city of Wyrica. And so they recommended that prime, the, the first thing we needed to do was go after this grant. That's their highest recommendation to get somebody in house that can apply for these. Um, and there's a, there's so much funding available here and we have an opportunity to possibly provide. Grant funding for home hardening for our local residents. And so, and then ultimately. We had the McKinney fire incident and certainly that was very scary, but I still stand by the fact that north, south and east is a huger, is a larger concern based off of grass fire. And what happened with the Almeida, Almeida fire. And so this would open up hopefully funding. This person would come in, they'd apply for those mastication, uh, grant monies. And then we would work the project with Wyrica Fire Safe Council that they've kind of already. Put on G I S for us or AutoCAD. And so that's pretty much it. The recommendation here tonight is. A motion to authorize the city manager to submit the State of California Office of Emergency Services, a grant application for up to one million in state funds to augment staff by funding a chief resilience officer. Or other similar position as well as planning activities and outreach for mitigation preparedness and recovery. Thank you.
All right, I'll open up to, uh, public comments at this time. Anyone online, Rhonda? Okay, I will close public comment. Council members, do you have questions, concerns? I will entertain a motion.
Councilman Middleton, I will make the motion to authorize the city managers submit. To the State of California Office of Emergency Services, a grant application for up to one million dollars in state funds. Documented staff, uh, by funding the chief resilience officer, other similar position as well as a planning activities and outreach for mitigation. Uh, paper to add recovery.
Do I have a second?
Councilman McCoy will second that motion.
All right, and the vote. Um, Mr. Mayor. Your vote?
Aye.
Aye, that was an aye.
Yeah, it was an aye.
Okay, thank you.
Broken up, aye.
Aye, yes, so.
Councilman McCoy, aye.
Councilwoman Middleton.
Aye.
Aye.
An aye. Motion carries. All right, item twelve B, agenda title, public safety calls for service. Um, Chief Gilman.
Well, Mayor Pro Tim, council members, how we doing? So this is stats. It won't be as sexy as Paul said because the fire chief in Portland, they have calendars. I don't, so. So basically what I'm bringing up, so I want to bring up the stats for our year and what we've got going on. And hopefully address some of the issues, uh, the crowd can with our stats with the homeless. I wish Mark was still here because some of his are in here. So I'll try to keep it not dry. So basically Wyrica is going through since twenty fourteen, which is when we have the new system we have. And that's as far back as I can go is the stats on my computer. We've had a fourteen percent increase over the years, um, and workload. So going from January to August, because we're not through the year and I did these stats in August. So I did every year, January to August. So it's the same number of days for every year. And that's where I got the fourteen percent difference. And this year we've handled over twenty two thousand calls for service already, which is well above what we've ever been. Right now we're averaging ninety two and a half calls a day for service. That started, if you all remember my, uh, last summer, when I was doing the weeklies, we had around fifty four calls for service. We're at ninety two and a half now on average.
Per day?
Per day. With our, our staffing levels haven't changed. We've added one casino officer position since twenty fourteen. And the calls have continued to increase since then without any additional staff. Um, we've had, just this month, we've had over three thousand three hundred calls and change. Um, in August, we've had two hundred and seventy nine police reports that we've written and investigated. We've made over ninety seven arrests. This is for August. In August, we've had two hundred and seventy-nine police reports that we've written and investigated. We've made over ninety-seven arrests. This is for August. We issued forty-one citations. The top, the top crimes for the year or for the month, I'm sorry, was vandalism, theft and assault and battery. So our number one call for service is related to homeless and transits. That doesn't reflect on here because these are the crime categories. So these are the top crimes that we investigate and write police reports for. That's in the top ten. The bottom of it is public intoxication, vehicle theft. We just had a rash, catalytic converter stolen. I mean, this is all over America. It's not, Wayrica is just not alone in it. And then looking back at the twenty top locations, this is where I get into your things. The homeless are our number one call for service. Address wise, the number one place that we go to per year is the casino. That's our number one call for service by a single address. If you look at a zone of addresses like the Walmart through railings, the North End Shopping Center. Our number, those are our number one calls for service if you combine the addresses together and it's all the homeless and the transient calls for service. So that's basically the stats. I mean, looking at. Let's see. For the total year, we've had eleven DUIs, forty-nine collisions. We've made six hundred and thirty-six arrests, a hundred and ninety were felonies. So we're doing this at a staffing level, which I'm doing good now. We're full now. When I started for for other reasons and society, we lost over half our department. And last year we had two homicides by this time. We had three drive-by shootings a week on average. Those were in my reports every every two weeks I'd come to you. This year we've had zero homicides and our drive-by shootings are almost uncountable. It's I think there's ten or something for the year that we've had. And that's all to my staff. We have brought people in that have dedicated themselves to making America safer. So the homeless, everyone's upset about the transit, the homeless. One of the homicide victims was homeless last year. That's fifty percent of the homicides. However, most of our homeless are homeless in the transients are homeless. They're usually drunks. They're usually begging. We've been focusing on the violent crime. We had to put a stop to that before it got out of control. My department has done that. And if you see any members of our department, you tell them thank you because they have stopped the violent crimes in Wayrica and this year so far. Is awesome. Now we're focusing on the homeless and transients, just like we focused on the violent crime from last year. Yesterday I started my homeless liaison officer position. It's the first it's ever been. We're working with the county and the COC. We don't have any contracts in place yet. However, I started anyways because the city manager and I felt it was important. We did the same thing with our school resource officer. Before we got stuff signed, just because it takes a while to get stuff through. We put him in the schools and started and we've already needed him many times. He's been very busy. There were just so much that we have built and we have done. These guys have a whole department, but I've had over six hundred hours of overtime in August and over five hundred hours of overtime in the month before that. I took our calls for service and our the number of staff we had, the sworn officers divided by the calls for service. Every sixty minutes they work, they do sixty-four minutes worth of work. Right now they do mandatory four hours of overtime every two weeks just to cover shifts at minimum staffing. Even though I'm full staff, I can't maintain minimum staffing. Without four hours of overtime per officer every two weeks. That's because throughout the history of YPD, we used to staff the streets with one person on duty after three to five o'clock at night. Until nine o'clock in the morning, we had one officer on duty. One of our officers ended up in a home invasion where the subjects were armed and ever since that day, we have two officers on duty all the time. If not more. So that cost me four hours of overtime every two weeks to cover that, but that's for the safety of the citizens and our officers. If an officer is by himself, he's more likely to have to use force on someone than if there was more officers there. So it's safer for the resties and the public if more officers show up because people will give in or surrender. Or think the numbers are out of their their realm. If we do it with one officer, they might have to use force, tasers, weapons, whatever. So those are the struggles we're dealing with. I think this homeless liaison position is really going to help us. Started yesterday, came and talked to me yesterday. He's already had a great conversation with one person who actually asked for help yesterday, who we've been dealing with for a year. And broke down, gave him his whole life story, the loss of his child, the loss of his wife, why he's on the streets, how much money he actually has. He's on the streets for other reasons. And reached out to our officer for help and the officer was helping him right now. That's day one. I was amazed. I mean, I was amazed. So I mean. There there's a lot to this, but I just want you all to know the homeless and the transient problems. I will take full responsibility for that. I am trying as hard as I can to work around bureaucracy. Supreme Courts, you know, laws that are in place in California. I take full responsibility for that. Everything good on that department, all the violent crime drop, everything that we are doing is succeeding. I just want you to know that that's my department. That's them. So thank them for all of that. Let them know they're doing a good job.
Thank you.
That's all I have. I have some discussions. I think I put it all out.
Thank you very, thirty-three hundred calls in August, as you said, and twenty-two. Three thousand three hundred calls and twenty-two thousand calls in a year.
So far, yeah.
Fourteen, fifteen, one officer.
We have, well, we're down to fourteen right now because our homeless liaison stepped down, but we're in the process of hiring. So technically I'm at full staff. I just have to wait for the whole hiring process.
But I think it's amazing for fourteen officers to handle that many calls.
Well, six hundred hours of overtime, they're they're not doing it. I mean, they're doing it with a lack of sleep. They're they're wore out. But they're still doing it for everyone. So we owe them all. Thank you.
Please, we have our appreciation. I will, thank you.
So was that a subtle reference to in the future, we need to consider another officer in your department?
We'll take all the officers we got.
So another thing I haven't brought up yet, I am building a reserve program. I have three reserve officers now, which we haven't had in ten years. I've got more that have applied and want to get online. Yes, I'd love more officers. Yes, I want to do whatever I can to make the officers I have happy and my dispatchers and my admin staff for how hard they work. A lot of that overtime is because of fires. We had the McKinney fire. We had the weed fire. So a lot of that overtime is the fires, which we get reimbursed for, but but they're tired. They they really work hard for the citizens of Wayrica and for the city staff. And you guys have been made. I mean, the city since day one that I got here. Has pushed me to advance all this. As we all know, I'm not a slow person that just sits on something. I every every meeting I come to you with a new plan and you guys always support it. So I want to thank you all.
Thank you for all your good work. And the officers too.
Do you want to ask for any public comment on that?
Is there any public comment on this? Alright. And so city manager report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Baird in Wayrica City Council, Jason Ledbetter, your city manager here again, and definitely very thankful for Chief Gilman. And our working relationship here and everything he's doing over there. And just to kind of touch on. The homeless issue is, you know, because I feel like. We are currently very active with, I know we have Supervisor Ogren in the crowd, but I have had multiple meetings with Supervisor Ogren, Dr. Sarah Kallard. Our mayor through the Continuum of Care Advisory Board that meets at Behavioral Health on a monthly basis. And so obviously, this city council supported the shelter. And the supervisors voted yes on a shelter that the county is going to lift up here in the city of Wayrica. And we're working on some other opportunities within that same realm and hope to be bringing that to you guys shortly. And so that is on an administrative side and looking at the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. That's the direction that the law is taking us in. And then with this homeless liaison. And our critical infrastructure ordinance in place with locations to send people. We are anticipating some level of improvement, but certainly we understand what everybody is currently dealing with. So. I think I've mentioned this to everybody, but we do have a, we have multiple on-call planning consultants under contract. One of them is Housing Tools. And so they are currently now on their first task order. And they're going to be performing the vacant site inventory, which includes city-owned vacant private and underutilized industrial properties. We should see that report sometime at the end of the year and then the city council should see that sometime January or February. And we'll use that document to go over city-owned inventory discussions that I know this council wants to go over. The intent of that report is basically going to come back to us from the housing tools perspective. And they're going to tell us within our own city, what property we own and what other properties. We could utilize for housing with the state funding. And so it'll help guide that decision-making process once city council is ready to make that decision. Staff and council member Smith Freeman have worked with the Elks Lodge. Thank you, Ms. Smith Freeman. And so they are going to put on the Holiday Parade event. I did get. The Bible book for the Holiday Parade. From Mayor Dwayne Keg today. So I do have that in my possession. And we will be working with a meeting with council member Freeman and council member Mayor Dwayne Keg and Brian Fabro from Elks. So we'll set up that meeting. Staff is also currently working with the EDC. They are going to take on the Night of Lights event. I'm still waiting for the final scope of work from Heather Dodds, but from the discussions, there's a lot of very interesting positive news that she will share with you about that event. I think it'll be. Based off some news she's going to share. Different than any other event we've ever had because there's going to be an added bonus that I don't want to spoil the surprise. Soil removal, we went over. The warming center. Here we are. It's October. So the city attempted as well as Supervisor Ogren through the summertime to find a partner for the location of a warming center. But we were not successful. As we approach winter, our best option is to partner with the county to have a warming center option. On the property the county plans to use for the low barrier shelter. Verbally, I have confirmation that the following idea would be acceptable with Health and Human Agency Director at the county, Dr. Sarah Kallard. This would mean that the city would need to purchase a tent and the heater and then set up said tent and heater at this new location. And then. The tent would be staffed by county social workers and then the city would need to provide some level of coverage with a YPD officer during operation hours for the warming center. If the low barrier shelter is not full, once it is completed. So next winter, more than likely some point. The possibility to have the warming center in that space becomes a possible discussion. But it's hard to have that discussion now because if it's full, then it can't be used as a warming center. So. If the shelter is full, the tent would be need to be utilized or the tent wouldn't be be needed to be utilized. And so I am going to put this on the ten eighteen agenda. I am going to seek written confirmation from Dr. Sarah Kallard of that option. For this location that we all seem that her and I seem to agree on here verbally. And I'll be bringing that on ten nineteen to have you guys vote. On whether or not you want me to pursue the purchase of that tent and HVAC unit with the intention to utilize on that location. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chief Lemus, would you care to have a report?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim and members of the council. And I don't want to have chief upscale me at all here, but your fire department is still, you know, maintaining doing as well as they can with short staff. And I'll I will have something for you as we go through this process with the ad hoc committee and and the two reps, Mr. McCoy and and Mayor Keg will have. Front row seats for that. But yeah, our our calls for service are still way up there. We're already at fifteen hundred plus calls now. We're going to be. We'll be pushing that two thousand mark more than likely. It's really hard to say, but you know, the majority of the of our time is spent on the the calls for service for medical and public assistance. So. We'll we'll find some rather than sit here and lament about why that is or, you know. What can what can we do this this very night? It's going to have to be something that's going to be a a plan, a plan-based approach and probably something with to do with. The healthcare community. And I even thought that I told city manager the other day in a department head meeting. You know, possibly even with hospice getting involved with some of the elderly that that need our help frequently. So try to think outside the box and and come up with a plan that's going to be the long haul. So. In addition to that, I mean, we're we're doing a lot, a lot of extra training. A lot of things are going on that you don't see like you see it behind the scenes and and that's going really well right now. We're still just. Trying to get our folks back from Cal Fire and they're slowly trickling back in from being released from from fires and so forth. But once that happens, I think we'll we'll be in a lot better spot going into the winter time and. But things are looking good. We have possible one more sleeper that'll be attending the fire. Fire Academy at COS, so that will help us as well. So other than that, it's just business as usual.
And Chief Lemus, I just wanted to interject. I was just reminded by the assistant city manager and I didn't mention it, but since that resolution was passed tonight. Our first ad hoc meeting is Thursday at seven thirty AM at the community center.
Thank you. Thanks for putting that together and the support is huge. So we want to keep that good faith going and and make sure that. Fire department going forward is going to be, you know, where it needs to be. We have some catch enough to to say it. Lightly, but we appreciate the support. We really do. So any questions that I can answer, yes.
Since we're already October, the holidays are around the corner. Are do you guys plan on participating every again like you do every year with the visiting the kids with the? The toys and the lights?
Yes, yes, we've already discussed it and that's in the works. Yes, that's the other.
That's great.
The secret center.
And then you can just shake your head because it's not be all from up there is. Lieutenant Booton, is he hoping to bring back the? Shop of the cup this year? Okay, great. Those are great programs of our our community and I appreciate and the kids just seeing.
Right.
It done is just wonderful. So I'm glad to see those quickly come back this year again.
We enjoy it. We enjoy those interactions as well, just so you know.
Awesome. Great. Great. Well, good job, you guys.
And we also do, we do outreach with fire prevention when when people request it. So for little kids to go to the schools, it's it's not as popular as it once was, but just know that that is still happening because. Unfortunately, we still are losing children to fires and children who cause fires unfortunately. So we're trying to educate that just like it is. For the importance it is to learn how to swim. It's, you know. It's more than just no play with matches these days. It's a lot of other things. So anyway, that's going on as well. But if any other, you guys have any other questions, I'd be happy to have the answer.
Sort of a question, one comment. So as our city manager mentioned, the Elks are going to be putting on the parade this year with a lot of other volunteers, anyone interested. And also former former chamber executive director for like twenty plus years, Mark Dean, is going to be one of the ones helping run it too. But I. Just wanted to make sure that you know it will be on the same day that it usually is, which is the Saturday following Thanksgiving. It's like the twenty-seventh, twenty-ninth of November and usually the fire department participates.
Will be there.
I don't know if we're going to have Santa Claus riding on it or.
Well, we can, we can talk about that if that's something that, you know, the 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 Elks would like to see or whoever's in charge, we can talk about that. I mean, that's something we have the. We have that ability to get a hold of them up there in the North Pole. We have radios. Direct line, so.
That would be sexy, yeah.
Yeah, we're looking forward to it. Yeah.
And Mrs. Claus.
Exactly.
Good job.
Alright, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Bray, Public Works Director, do you have anything you'd like to add? No? Okay, Rheta, Assistant City Manager, you good? Alright then, council member statements. This Mayor Keg, do you have anything you'd like to discuss?
Um, not really off the top of the top of my head, but a couple of things here. We have our COC meeting tomorrow at one thirty at Behavioral Health. We are also going to be talking about some point in time committee. And who wants to be involved in that? That's going to be a hot topic so we can get moving on that. So we'll be prepared for January. And the only other thing I have a question. On would be for Jason slash Mark Chief Gilman would be, are we lacking anything on the critical infrastructure ordinance? To help Mr. Gilman, Chief Gilman to move forward on that.
This is Jason Ledbetter. I think at this point, the one item within that ordinance is we still need to finalize and I believe our finance director was working on this. Chief Gilman. Was citations. Uh, in the Martin versus Boise decision, that's a financial burden that is unacceptable unacceptable to place on somebody that is unhoused and doesn't have the. Financial backing to pay. And so we have to put together a volunteer document that basically allows the person receiving the citation not to have. Financial impact, but um the citation would be based around volunteerism. And I believe Emily is still currently working on that. So that's the final piece. But that's also on some level, it's a piece of paper and under this circumstance, the way the Ninth Circuit looks at it. It doesn't necessarily mean it's going to resolve our problems because ultimately. We could cite with volunteer, I believe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, chief, a million times. That does not going to change the fact that the person may or may not comply with that citation. So.
Yeah, that's and I know there was some talk recently on uh the grants pass, losing their court appeal. And it comes down to on that one, um, the same thing with Martin versus Boise. That what transpired is basically they kept citing this individual. For um camping and in a public area and on the parks and stuff. And didn't give him any options or give him the options, you know, to pay the firing, you know, because they didn't have that written in and they they lost their lawsuit. That was finalized. So that's why we want to make sure as a city that we um dot our i's and cross our t's to make sure we're doing everything properly. Um, and give uh Chief Gilman the proper tools to to move forward too. So um, that's all I got to say. I just want to thank. I want to thank Chief Gilman. For everything he's been doing. He's been putting in so much extra time. It's it's. I can't even comprehend how much time he's been putting in and this and his staff has been putting in. That's a, those guys are relentless and they keep doing it just for the good of. Of the city and I just want to thank them and and uh that's all I want to add on that. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. Um, council members, I neglected to uh welcome our supervisor Nancy O'Grain. And I'd like to give you an opportunity right now, if you have anything you'd like to share with us.
No, you don't have to.
You don't have to. No, I just wanted to acknowledge. Okay, alrighty then.
We had a meeting today.
Alrighty, uh, Councilmember McCoy.
I'll try to make it quick, but I do have a few things. I I do want to thank uh um uh Councilman Lamalfa. I was on the phone with his office today for about forty five minutes. Um, one.
Congress.
Congress, Congressman Congressman, thank you. Congressman Congressman Lamalfa uh. Um, he uh, I want to thank the Dollys along with him. I had spoken to him like five years ago after you had spoken to the Dollys. And one of the things he told me is he says, don't get me involved. I can't do any crime federal. Um, but the Dollys that work very, very hard uh for us and we do appreciate that and I I know they'll continue to work for us. Um, I I shared with Congressman Lamalfa again today it based on the McKinney fire and then the different alt fires we had, including. The one in in weed there, the mill fire. I thanked him for all his support and um. His office also shared that they would continue to support our citizenry here uh from a federal level. Um, so and I'd already, we we thanked Feinstein uh, you know, publicly because I know she is also um said that she will support anything we need here. But La- Lamalfa is very aware of it. He's a small town boy and he's very aware of what goes on in small towns. Um, I want to thank Brian Fabro. I had a chance to, he and I had a chance to talk today about the Christmas bird. I know he's very excited. About it and we we had a a nice chat about it and I appreciate um what they're doing and I also appreciate that um some of the money that they um. May take in during the parade is going to go for um the veterans um cemetery out at um Evergreen. Um, and I also thank him for the campaign forum that they are, I think the Elks are going to run a campaign forum. So far we've. I think we had one with the. One with the Patriots, I think, yeah. Um, that three, I think three candidates were at and three were not invited. So I I'm glad that uh that he did, they did that. Um, I'm excited to see Natalie Thai moving on December first to the Purple Plum. I think that's going to be a a a a shot in the arm for them and for our city. Because people are going to stop off the freeway and they're going to find that Natalie Thai is a great restaurant. Um, there's a magazine called Enjoy Magazine. It's free magazine comes out of Reading. I I hope some of you have already seen it. Been going for probably five or six years, but a local girl by the name of AJ Young, AJ Undesign, she will be the featured um. She'll be a a feature article in it. Um, she went to Irica High, she went to Jackson Street and she went to uh Gold Street School. And Evergreen and um she is a designer down there. She just finished last year her first movie. She was a lead costumer on a, I think it was a a slasher. But you know, you got to start something. And uh, so I'm 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 very happy that we can see a hometown girl doing that. Um, I am anxious to see what Heather Dodds has for us. Heather has always been shoes with the paper and everything she's done. She's always been wonderful and um highly thought of. So I appreciate that. Um, I'm excited to see that SB James is has been awarded contract for the um. Gas station, liquor store, all that stuff down in Steve Nelson's old office in that area. And um, so that's going to be nice. I don't know when it's going to start, but SB James is going to be doing that and they're a large company out of out of Oregon. Um. I want to thank, I I I shouldn't say this probably because then everybody will come down and we're going to be calling me. I want to thank Public Works for how they use Measure C money. I don't, Matt, you still up there?
Yes.
Yeah, I I want, you don't have to get up. I mean, I want to thank Public Works for how they use Measure C money. Now, I'm going to tell you when I got on council and anybody that's running. Uh, one thing that you're going to learn is that um anywhere around your house. Uh, or your neighborhood, if it needs something, it's going to come last because you don't want to appear to be getting preferential treatment. And so I was um pleasantly surprised when Cedar Street, like three blocks of Cedar got um.
Chip sealed.
Chip sealed, yeah. And it extends the life. It's the second time it's been chip sealed. I've lived there thirty years and I'll tell you what, it sure makes a difference. It's wonderful. Your guys were wonderful. They were working on Saturdays um because they had some issues they had to work on down here on the sewer water project. And again, that that Measure C money is is money. I know it's tax money, but it's money well spent. So. Um, yeah, you you did, yeah. And uh, I think it was actually. Trying to think of what, would you want to, yeah, okay, yeah. I know Ann, Ann worked, I know Ann worked ha- hard on the Measure H money for the fire department. So Ann Castor.
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry, I started saying Corral Bob, but.
I was talking about.
Kicking in, you know. Yeah, that goes back too far. So. Yeah, so uh, so anyway, I'm 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 very uh pleased to get that. Uh, chief, you don't know, but I'm going to be riding with Luna on a full shift. I talked to Dirksen today. Anyway. Now Luna's driving, yeah, Luna's driving. And Luna's putting me in the cage. She said, you can ride in the cage. Um, I I I may be speaking out of turn, chief, so you may stop me if you'd like, but um, I'm uh, I, we're uh. We have challenge coins for Luna. They're fifteen dollars and um they're pretty cool. Um, as you know, we have.
Police dog.
The police dog, Luna, yeah. We borrowed the police dog from Mount Shasta when we had somebody up around a casino that that uh needed to be flushed out of a culvert. And the dog went in, had a talk and the guy came out. So uh, I, when I went down to make a donation to their dog, they said, oh, here, well, you know, if you're going to make a donation. You know, for every twenty dollars you donate, we're going to give you a stuffed animal. So that's what I, I think I talked to you about it. And anyway, I'm I'm glad that we're doing something like that. I think it's a great outreach. Um, I spoke with the homeless liaison today uh for a short time. I didn't want to keep him from his uh duties. Um, he's very excited about it. Um, I know he was from the last COC meeting, but um um he's he's got a background in it. I'm so excited uh for that to happen. And then finally, I'm I'm going to leave, you know, we never know when we're going to meet somebody somewhere. And I've always, I always taught my kids at Jackson Street School that they needed to, we needed to work to solve conflicts. And the more we know somebody, the less apt we are to say something negative or oppressive or or to speak poorly of somebody. Um, I had close friends that live up the street from me visiting in Meridian, Idaho. They decided they wanted Chinese food one night. So they went into a Chinese restaurant in Meridian. It just happened to be a woman that was working there. Her son owned it. And she said, you guys are from Wairika? And they said, yes, we are. She said, well, I I worked at Ming, our uh China Dragon. She said, I worked there fifteen years. And she could still remember their names. And then she said, um. How are my nephews doing? And they said, well, what do you mean? They said, well, they bought the restaurant from Mr. and Mrs. Mao. And uh, yeah, yeah. And and so um it's small world. So they got to talking about that and um. It would, you know, it's it's just, you you see people out and around and, you know, we always want to be kind to people. Finally, um, I shouldn't do this, but I'm going to, I'm pretty shameless plug in for Bob there. Bobby, you got your second novel, your second novel's out, isn't it? Your first novel is out. I know my wife has. Isn't your second novel out?
Third one.
Okay.
You missed one.
Well, yeah, if you guys, if you guys get a chance, actually, uh, the Bob's novels are wonderful. So thank you. And I'm sorry it took so long. Thank you.
A- actually, I have both of them.
No, I didn't.
I did, I did indeed. Councilmember Middleton.
All right, um, I'm going to make a real quick actually. Um. Just a reminder, and we don't have to talk about it here, but if you, we could talk about this week is I want to. Talk about when um Chief uh Lemus came up, it was reminded me that we have not circled back when I brought up the. When I brought up about the calls, getting some type of reimbursement for calls. I want to make sure we bring that back and keep. Plugging away at that because we have not discussed that since I have um brought that up. Few months ago. So if we can, if you can just call me, we can talk about it where we're at on that.
I think that'll be part of the solutions process through the ad hoc committee and then we'll be bringing a final package.
The dawn, I mean, he blocked it. I said, gosh, we haven't talked about that a few months. So I don't want to lose sight on that because I know he's been.
But we appreciate that because we do want to pursue that. Thank you.
Um, let's see, last weekend, um, on my other nonprofit organization that I runs the fair and Debbie's on. Um, Debbie uh did participate. She was ill last weekend, the last Saturday as we bartended the. Um, maybe that they held uh the Montague City Hall for the fundraiser for the Clement River uh community hall that they lost during the fire. Uh, so Riza Augren was there as. And so was uh two other supervisors, was there? Or three? Two? Right, right. Mr. Lamalfa was there. So a lot of, lot of support. It was packed. They had opened up the other rooms, so. Big turnout, generous community. Um, I mean, there's people from where every town you can imagine. Um, people there supporting that small community in their time of need. And that's what's nice about our areas. We all come together. Twenty six thousand.
Is that how much?
That's awesome. Yeah, it was, it was great.
Twenty six thousand.
So uh. It was nicely a part of it and a lot of the community members came up, thanked us for being there and it was, you know, I thank them for allowing us in the organization that put it on. For allowing us to part, you know, part in for friends of the fair because our organization is important and we did make a donation back to the um cause as well. So it takes a. Village, but we all come together in time and needs during tragedies. So um, it was great to see the turnout, everybody there. Having a good time. You, you know, there are a lot of people there that lost their home. We just felt for them. Um, but they're there in good spirits and. You know, coming up to us and nice and big, we just felt for them that they, you know, they're going to rebound and tell their strong community and strong people. Um, just thank you to um Chief Gilman. I know that he has a lot going on. We got to remember that, you know, some of our officers, they have families at home and so the four hours they're doing overtime, you know, we're taking away from their their families. So they can serve our community here. And yeah, it gets frustrating, but just remember they can do it all. They're trying. Boy, they tried. And when I took my seat here two years ago, just a few minutes in our place, everyone wasn't, everybody knows it was publicized, it was in dire straits. And to see it today, it's a leadership and uh the officers are down there. It's just a huge change. So when citizens are thinking we are not making a difference or they're not making a difference or something slips through their tracks, believe they're making a difference. And I hope to think we made a difference of supporting them where he could do his job. Because it was not a fun time for us. It was not. And, you know. Um, but I'm going to end with that. So thank you very much.
Okay. Councilmember Freeman.
Um, uh, yeah, I just have a a few things to talk about. So uh, those of you that came, not this last weekend, but the weekend before to the balloon fest, the Montague Rotary. And the uh North Siskiyou Chamber uh balloon fest. It was a great event. It was better than, well, it was, well, for one thing, they hadn't had it in a couple of years. But anyway, it was a good turnout. There were a lot of people there. Um, and I worked it from Thursday, the twenty second to twenty third, twenty fourth and twenty fifth. With Montague Rotary, um, doing various different things, whatever they needed me to fill on, in on. But I wanted to talk about the parade. So Supervisor O'Grain, he was here and also Supervisor Brandon and Chris were both in the parade and they both won ribbons. But Supervisor Brandon and Chris up to you because he brought his son to walk down the street with him. And because it was his district probably. And Mayor and Mayor Tiffany Lorenzini, she got best of show. She did a really good job and. And had a fancy car. And there was a really good turnout. They had the horses and, you know, and and all the kids that were in it. A lot of cars there because they had a a car show that day too. So the cars were in the parade as well as the horses and the fire trucks. The fire trucks were there. Not Wairika, but Grenada and Montague were there. And uh, it was, it was nice to see the support for the community by having them all there. I was honored to be able to help them and work with them on that. Um. And uh, I wanted to let you all know that that the Siskiyou Women in Business, uh, our annual symposium, as they call it, is this weekend, this Friday. Uh, and our speaker, our keynote speaker will be our assemblywoman, our assembly member Megan Dolly. And so uh. She's not really going to be talking about the issues as much as she's going to, since this is a women in business. She's going to be talking about um, you know, the challenge that it is. She's got three kids, two of them in college and then she's got a young uh daughter who is adorable. But uh, anyway, and of course you, I think everybody knows her husband is wa- running for governor. Um, I don't know if he'll make a surprise visit or not. She or she uh made some extra uh reservations, so we'll see how many people show up. But uh, anyway, she's going to be our keynote speaker and that will be, I think that we're really honored. She showed up and just surprised us last year. This year, she told us well in advance that she would be there. And I know Supervisor O'Grain and I will both be there and hopefully you can make it too now that you're well.
I haven't even seen where it's at yet.
Now, I will fill you in on all the details. Um, also, the Red Scarf Society is having uh one of their quarterly events. Um, it's going to be not this Saturday, but the following Saturday. So which one is that? That's um, anyway, uh, it's the Rice Brothers and they play piano and cello and it's going to be here in town at the Wairika Preservation from seven to nine PM. And let me look real quick. So it's not the seventh, uh, it's the fifteenth. And it's right here in beautiful downtown Wairika at the, at the Wairika Preservation. Um, the Elks, by the way, has agreed to have the candidates forum that we were talking about earlier. Um, they were talking about having it October thirteenth, but it may be on the twentieth. I thought that there would be a flyer out by now, so I'll check into that. Um, all the candidates? Not just three. All the candidates are welcome to come and I would invite you all to be there as well. Um, they will be taking, you know, three by five card questions. Uh, and uh, Brian Fabro has agreed to emcee it like he did two years ago. When you guys were running. Uh, he does a really good job with that, I think. Um, Lola, the League of Local uh Cities. League of Local Agencies, we call it. Anyway, the quarterly meeting, which is all the cities in the whole county, is going to be in Mount Shasta at the park. Um, on October nineteenth. So that's coming up as well and looking forward to that. It's the only opportunity. Where all of the city council members in the whole county have the opportunity to get together, talk about issues, talk about possible solutions, what worked for one city. What didn't work for another and all of us get together. And I I always enjoy those events. I learn a lot about what's going on in our county at those events. Um, Lola, I just wanted to say how proud I am of the Elks. Elks is a a local nonprofit organization. I see a few members in here. I know Drake is a member, right, Drake? Drake can't hear me. Okay, um, there's quite a few members near Nancy. I think you're a member as well as myself and others. Um, it's a wonderful local nonprofit organization that gives back to the community. That's, that's the whole purpose for them being. They give back. That's, that's the whole purpose for them being. They give back. They do a lot of kids' events, and we do scholarships, and they give back to the community. And I am so proud of them for stepping up at the last minute, when we found out that the Chamber wasn't gonna be doing the parade, that they would be willing to do it. And another member is Mark Dean. Like I said, the former, eh, Executive Director of the Chamber is going to step up and help with that event as well. So I am so proud of them. Um, and then, uh, our Local Transportation Commission meeting is going to be on the eleventh, so it'll be next week. And we're having some discussions about the structure of our Local Transportation Commission. Right now, it goes through the county, uh, and it's, we're almost like two separate entities that sometimes work to, that work together. And some of it's count, well, the county employees, and then we hire the Executive Director. We're looking at a way to restructure that, so it works a little better. And so those are some of the discussions that are going on this week, and we'll talk about it more next week. And then last week, I attended the Climate Basin Integrated Fisheries Restoration and Monitoring Implementation Workshop in Ashland. It was a three-day event. I went, uh, for one day, and our attorney attended, uh, by phone three days. Um, I just can't tell you how important it is for us to be at the table to protect our water. And I've been on the Water Committee for eight years now, representing us, making sure whenever I show up, I always say, "My name is Jones Smith Freeman. I'm here for the city of Wairika, and I'm here to protect our water." Now, they know me, and they nod their heads as soon as I went to that one meeting with me. It's a very important, because you know my motto, "If you're not at the table, you're on the menu." We don't wanna be on the menu for somebody else to look at our water. And, and I've been asked the question, you know, "Well, what if we used your water? Isn't there another place for you to get your water?" And I always say the same thing, "No." We've got our water. It's pumped twenty-six miles to town. It's fresh, clean water. And we have to keep it so that we can not only serve our citizens, but also so our city can grow. So, anyway, that was a most interesting workshop that I, thank you, Madam Mayor Proton.
Debbie, can I just make a correction to Joni's, uh, comment regarding Red Scarf? The Rice Brothers will be coming in on Thursday night. They'll be doing two outreaches in the schools here in Wa- in Wairika. Our concert is this Saturday, the eighth, at Historic Preservation. Um, doors open at seven. The concert's at seven-thirty. Um, this group will, there's two brothers. They're young. Um, they will play classical. They will do boogie-woogie. Uh, they will do ragtime. Uh, both of them play the cello, and both of them play the piano. So, um, we're, tickets are available at Nature's Kitchen and Liberty Arts. Uh, they're thirty dollars, thirty-five at the door. So thank you, Joni, for mentioning it. It, I just wanted to make the correction. It's this Saturday night. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the corrections, Joan. I appreciate it. And I want everybody to go.
Good. We need to fill that hall.
That's right.
Thank you.
And where's your report?
Well, I was waiting to see if there were any, any more voices from above.
Your report is, you're well.
Yes, I'm well. Sorry I missed the last city council meeting, and unless anybody else has something to add, we're good for the evening, okay? All right, thank you. Meeting adjourned.